Okay, good evening if we can stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, of the great, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Alright, good evening everybody. We'll start with the report of the chairman and first up we have recognition of our commended National Scholarship Students. So Steve, are you going to introduce them?
Is that okay?
Absolutely.
Yeah, sure. You guys can come on over. So every year nationally, the PSAT, NMSQT, so it's pre SAT, but it's the National Merit Scholar Qualifying Test is given across the nation. We have seven students, even though only six are here tonight, that have qualified as scoring in the top 3.5% of all national test takers. So it's an honor to be a commended student as well as a semifinalist student. We have seven commended students, which again means they scored in the top 3.5% of all test takers across the nation. So it's an incredible honor. It's a feather in the cap not only to these students, their families, but also to the faculty and staff of Monroe Public Schools, but also Massey High School more specifically in terms of preparing the students for this test. As a commended student, they're also going to be, well, they're not going to be getting National Merit Scholarships. There is the potential that these students, they will become candidates for other scholarships sponsored by corporate, excuse me, corporations and businesses. So again, it's just an incredible honor for them, their families, and for the schools. The students' names are Megan Braywa, who is here. So how do you want to do the?
Yeah, well, go over.
Brenna Chopski. Justin Ginta. He's not here. He apologizes for not being able to be here. Emmanuel Hernandez. Jacob Lee. Nihas Samuel. And Grace Shawa. And Grace, you prepared a few words, right? You wanted to share? No, I'm just kidding.
Please, no.
She does the morning announcements and pledge, and I just wanted to see if she would turn red. She did. Congratulations.
Congratulations, guys.
And you guys can take off and go. That's the happiest news they heard. Alright, we will move on to our consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve? Thank you, Jerry. Do I second? Thank you, Dave. Any discussion? Alright, hearing none. All in favor? And Shannon, oh Diane, Shannon is on the computer, so she approved also. Alright, we will move on to our reports of our committees and liaisons. Up first is our Massey.
Good evening, Board of Ed. I'm going to start tonight with our sports. So our field hockey team is five and two after a glorious win over Weston. And the final score was seven to zero. So very proud of our girls. Our girls volleyball team is now six and O after a three to zero win against Colby Cathedral. And our boys soccer team is now has won four and O over Fairfield. So now Melanie is going to talk about swimming.
Girls Swim has a meet against Joel Barlow tomorrow at the Massey Pool. And sophomores and juniors took the PSAT last Wednesday on the 14th. And the first meeting of Memories Matter Club took place today. And there will be a walk to Aunt Alzheimer's held at Massey on Sunday, November 1st. And now Sujah with the details on Spirit Week.
Massey kicked off our first day of Spirit Week today with our theme Mathletes vs Athletes. Our other themes include School Color Day, Theme Day, Red, White, Red and White Day. Thank you.
Hold on, hold on, huh? Mr. Swenson, a mathlete or an athlete today? Were you, oh, were you in school today?
Personally, I was actually.
Melanie, you'd be the only one. What was he, a mathlete or an athlete? You sure? He had an R2-D2 suit on today.
No. Is there pictures of that?
I'm sure.
There are.
And they're not on the big screen?
My wife would not allow me to wear it tonight to the Board of Ed meeting.
What?
She told me I had to change.
She's so fun.
Thanks, kiddo.
Thank you. Any other reports tonight?
Yeah, I just, I attended the Board of Finance meeting, but I think we're, and spoke, but I think we're going to cover that later.
Okay. What was I going to say? CES, Joe sent out something. I think he sent it to everybody. So CES is, that's the one that we don't have, we have an open position for. Unfortunately, Chip did confirm that their meeting is on 3:00 on Thursdays. And I think that kind of pushes everybody out of that. So. Alright, anybody else on the committee reports? Alright, we will move on to public participation. If anybody wishes to public participate, if anybody's on the, well, you have to unmute them, right?
Q and A session has started.
Is anybody on? Okay, so we'll start with people here if they want to talk. You can come up.
Good evening. Marie Blake, 359 Wheeler Road. First of all, I'd like to thank you for allowing me to speak to you in person tonight. More than ever, I think we can agree that although technology connects us, it also separates us. I'd like to begin with an invitation. Our elementary teachers would like to extend an invitation to you, the board members, to visit their classrooms during the day to get a firsthand account about what classes look like and see firsthand the educational format, lunch, recess, mass breaks, and so on. It might be beneficial to have a firsthand account as you are charged with making so many crucial decisions about teaching and health and safety during this pandemic. If any of you are like me, it's been difficult to find much rest or relaxation lately. I woke up this morning at 2:00 AM and couldn't go back to sleep. After thinking about it for a while, I realized it was a feeling, something akin to buyer's remorse. The way I define buyer's remorse is a feeling of regret. A feeling where I wish I hadn't committed to the deal that I committed to. Usually, something triggers this feeling, which results in a lack of trust or faith in the other party. No, I didn't buy a new car this weekend. But I was thinking about my leadership in the MEA and the role I played in agreeing to signing an MOU to give up to three furlough days during what was anticipated to be a difficult financial year. Lately, I am constantly reminded that the $323,000 was last year's money. Okay, I got it? So let's look at this year's money. Number one. The district is paying Dr. Zamory in excess of $190,000 to be a consultant. This was not a line item in the budget. In September, Chairwoman Lane stated that Joe and Ron combed through the budget and found savings so that this consulting fee is now accounted for in the budget. That's a lot of money to find. Number two. On August 24th, elementary teachers were notified that the district would be hiring the K-5 math coordinator as a consultant, collecting a stipend at around $4,000. I believe this was even before clubs were reinstated. Number three. Clubs are reinstated at Massey and Jockey Hollow at approximately $92,000. How is that a priority over filling current contractual obligations? Along with stipends or salaries? I'm assuming those figures are fixed since it is a known dollar amount. Number four. John Batista was brought to Massey to help with the transition of principals and then spent, I believe, a good part of August and September at Central Office helping with the transition there. My question, is the compensation he received a line item in the budget? And how much did his time and service cost? I know the board has the discretion to spend funds as they see fit. I just question how the priority list is made. When will meeting our original contractual obligation become a priority? I was asked recently if I was going to scrutinize every dollar that the board spent. As a town resident, as a teacher who sacrificed approximately $2,000 for the good of the community, and as the president of the MEA, the answer is yes. Yes, I will be watching how every dollar is spent. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody on the phone that wishes to speak? If so, please state your name and address for the record.
No one?
Okay, great.
I'm on the phone, and this is Shannon Manaco. Can I say something?
Sure.
I have a question. I know that, you know, I heard, I could hear Marie Blake, and I have a couple of questions. I know that she's asking questions of us, the Board of Education, during public participation. And I think, you know, we know the rules of public participation. But my question is, is it appropriate for the union president to be making these questions and demands in this fashion directly to the Board of Ed? That's, that's my first question. This is, that's my first question.
I don't know if I necessarily have an answer to that.
I'm not comfortable, you know, I'm not comfortable. I go, I go, make to Joe, is that, is that maybe a Joe question? Like, doesn't that normally, doesn't the union president typically go through the superintendent? And we, we, the Board of Education, have counsel for these negotiations. Is that correct, Joe?
I'm, I'm not really sure, Shannon. I could find out. I could ask.
Please do, please do. I would appreciate that. Thank you, Joe, because I think that we have to follow, you know, the proper, of course, anybody could quote, you know, and follow the rules of public participation and everything. But to, I'm not sure if the goal was to try to negotiate directly with the Board of Ed in this, through public participation, and if so, is that appropriate?
It happens in other school districts. The union presidents always attend board meetings, and it's very common for the union president to address the board the way Marie, the way Marie Blake did. It's free speech.
Well, I think public participation, obviously, anybody can come before the board and speak. I don't think that Marie's addressing us in that capacity, from what I heard, but.
No, it was the questions. That's what I'm wondering. They were like, was it questions to us directly?
I think it's back to Joe.
To be answered in public participation. That's my, that's my question. If, if that's, I would just like a better understanding of, of the process for that, for my own sake.
If, if history matters here, it's happened hundreds of times.
I don't think she's saying that. I think she's just saying, I think she wants, she wants better understanding is what she's saying.
Okay.
Right, like, because, because if, if I heard it right, there's, there's questions of us from the union president during public participation. Is that correct? Were there questions?
Yeah, that's a fair, that would be a fair assessment.
So is, is that what I'm hearing others say is standard?
Well, yeah, because how about if a parent, how many parents have sat in front of us and asked us a question?
That's the thing. I think it's the, in the capacity. I don't believe Marie's addressing us as the union president. She, she stated her name for the record, her address, so let's let Joe just go back and figure, figure that out.
Right, because that's, okay, thanks, George.
I, I was wondering that myself, too. Because this is, it's public participation. Marie is a resident. She can certainly come up here, and we will listen. But this is three meetings in a row as the union president pushing union issues. And I was also sitting here wondering, is she negotiating? Is this the proper venue for this? Union concerns should go to the superintendent in case there's a grievance later on, and then we need to hear that. So it's just venue. It's not that, we don't shut anyone off, certainly not. Anyone can speak. But it's, it's a little different when you're, when you're wearing the hat of the MEA president, and everything that she's brought to us the last three meetings is union agenda, so.
Right, we have legal counsel for that, so that's why, that's why I'm wondering, if we're following the rules of public participation. Absolutely, of course, that's fine. But trying to negotiate with the Board of Ed through that is, is my question. Is, is the questions of us in that venue appropriate?
And each time it has stimulated conversation like it's doing right now.
But isn't that what it's supposed to? See, I'm gonna, I'm gonna agree, I'm gonna calmly agree to disagree. This, this happens all over the state. It's supposed to. She's not supposed to go to Joe with these grievances. She could speak every other week here. That's her role. She can do that. And we can't censor, nor will I.
I don't think anybody's.
No, but those questions shouldn't be going to Joe. Those questions should be coming to us. We're the board.
I just want to reiterate that I think it would be unusual for the union president not to attend every board meeting and speak. It happens in every other town in Connecticut.
I'm not saying she should speak. I, I think she should be here. She's the president of our largest union. She should be present here. Everyone will be allowed to speak. I'm not saying that at all. I'm just wondering, is this the right venue for a union?
But like Jerry said, everyone, most of the speakers who come up here do ask questions. So we should not allow anyone to ask questions anymore?
Yeah.
Or are we just singling her out?
Because of the union.
You're the union. You're not allowed to ask questions, but the public can step forward and ask questions.
I think it's a content.
Wait, hold on. You guys are talking over each other, so one at a time. Hold on.
Questions and try to negotiate in a public forum. We have legal counsel for that. And of cour, and I'm not censoring, I'm certainly not, you know, advocating censoring anybody. And anybody can speak during public participation and follow the rules, and part of the rules of public participation are, you know, to not expect an answer. You know, you could always ask questions, but to not expect an answer. But if she's wearing a different hat as the union president, and is she, is she trying to negotiate with the Board of Ed directly through public participation, and if so, is that appropriate?
So that, so David, what did you want to say?
No, I just, just to add in, I think it depends on the, the content of her speech and what issues she's raising. She's raising issues as union president, not as a resident.
Right, right, agreed. Agreed. I'm not comfortable with it.
Wait, hold on.
We have legal counsel, you know, so, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with, with the public participation, of course, you know, but just this is, this, I don't know.
Yeah.
This is the third meeting, as Dave said, this is the third meeting in a row now. So if this is going to continue from the union president, you know, we need to, we need to get a better understanding from how this should be handled, like, for trying to negotiate in this, in this forum.
Alright, thank you. Nick?
Just to chime in very quickly, I think absolutely this is the forum that the MEA president should be speaking at. And I'm trying to put myself in the shoes of a teacher who elected the officers of the MEA and put people in leadership who was going to fight on my behalf. And if I'm in, if I'm a member of any union, I'm not, I don't want to say the teachers' union specifically, just talk about the, the theory of a union, you want your leadership to be active and vocal. And I think that the MEA president, whomever it may be, whether they are a resident or not, is fully aware that their comments, when they come here and speak, are fully on the record, fully in public. There's nothing more public, I think, than what we're doing right now. So I think that the MEA president should absolutely tell us whatever he or she has issues with or wants us to know at any given time.
Okay, well, my, my question will, will still be, and I know Joe's going to look into it, my question will still be directed, you know, to, to find out, you know, an answer as far as, you know, certainly, anybody can call in during public participation, but what are the guidelines for negotiating with the MEA president? And is this, is this what is recommended for us?
David?
From the, from the last three times Marie spoke, I'm getting the impression that the union thinks that we're not going to honor the MOU. And Marie, as far as I'm concerned, we agree to the MOU. So if those conditions come, come to fruition at the end of this year, we honor that MOU that we signed with you. So if you heard different, then let us know, because I don't think anyone up here says we're not going to honor that MOU if the conditions in that MOU are met at the end of this year. We signed, we signed it, we honor it.
If there's money left.
But see, now I think that's negotiated. I think if we don't, if we don't engage in conversation, which we do usually do, I don't think there's any negotiation going on.
Right, we, we usually don't address the questions.
Right.
So there's no negotiation.
I mean, if someone, if a parent comes up here and says, I'm going to sue you because of X, Y, and Z, we don't go, oh, well, hold on. Let's talk about your case.
We never.
No, we just don't respond.
It's the same thing. It's the same thing here.
Agreed.
We had, we had people in the town council, I remember, we had newspaper reporters actually come up to public participation to protest. We were about to go into an executive session, and they said, this is not right. And they weren't even Monroe residents. It was anybody. And they said, this is the reason, this is the reason, this is the reason. We said, okay, thank you. And then we did what we did.
Right.
I don't think you can restrict someone's free speech.
No.
Based on their role.
Alright.
I'll try to get some clarity.
Yeah, if you can just get some clarity for, to get a full understanding for everybody.
Thank you. That's all I'm with the four. And thank you. And I, I couldn't hear everybody speaking there, but I did hear Dave Ferris and I heard Donna. They're probably closer to the phone than Joe, but thank you.
Okay. Alright, so nobody else was on the phone, right? Okay, thank you. So we will move on to the report of the acting superintendent. And so first up is the monthly financial, which I'm assuming, Ron, you're going to do.
So the, um, the first order of business is the, is the pages 22, 26, 22 are the transfers that I said I have for you. Two small ones. The first one is Monroe L Library. Is that better?
Yes.
First transfer is a small transfer for the Monroe L Library for $900 from AB Supplies and Books. And the second transfer, which is the correction of an error on my part, is moving money from extra work certified in old language to extra work certified. I don't know if anyone has any questions on the new ones. So pursuant to the new policy, that would require a.
Yep. So do you want to just go over all of them?
Yeah, that, that's the only transfer.
Oh, those, that's the only transfer. Oh, it's just supporting pages for the, okay. Do we have that on the agenda further down?
Do not believe we do.
Okay, so then I will need to.
amend the agenda.
Yeah, we need to amend the agenda. So if we can, under new business, add, so I have a motion to add an item C, which will be a vote on the budget transfers as presented. Thank you. Do I have a second to add that? Thank you, David. All, any discussion on adding this to the agenda? Alright, all in favor of adding this to the agenda? And Shannon is a yes, so motion passes, so we will vote on that as item C when we get to new business. Thank you.
Item B is going to be review of the fund statements for September. So I don't know if, if anyone has any questions, if, does anyone have anything specific before I get into a couple of line items I'd like to discuss here?
Go ahead, Jeff.
I didn't say it was an error, but if, I mean, it wasn't an expenditure error, it was just, we're talking an error from accounts.
Yeah.
Old language to athletics.
Yes. The intent was to move it from the one account, maybe right next to the other.
Okay, Ron, you have, nobody seems to have any questions so far, so if you want to just go over.
Okay, so on the fund statement, a couple of lines I want to discuss, on page two of the fund statement. Showing negative 563,000. That's what we've done. Added in there is the fact that we have received an ECS grant.
Not ECS, excess cost.
Excess cost.
ECS.
Excess cost, excess cost grant. Not the, ECS is the educational cost. Yep.
And two lines below that supplies other showing a negative 190,000.
Now, is that COVID supplies, is that net, a net of the CARES and the other money that we got, or no?
That's everything. We haven't met, we haven't captured any, any. So that's our actual COVID expenditures, expenditures, here to date, about 304,000.
Now, is that the emergency money they talked about last week? Is that, is that going to be utilized for any of the COVID stuff, or we don't know yet?
You're talking about the money that the Board of Finance put aside?
Mm-hmm.
So it, it may be needed after any, you know, we'll go through the process of trying to capture everything through the grants. And if there's anything that we haven't been able to capture through the grants, that's.
Then there's a possibility of putting it to that emergency fund. But we have to capture it through the grants that we've already received. And especially if those grants are earmarked very specifically, we can only spend it very specifically on that.
So far, right now, we have the CARES Act money and then the coronavirus relief funds are the two, the two grants that we've been awarded to net against those. And at, at the, this is what I think, Nick, we were talking about before. At the Board of Finance meeting on Thursday night, the Board of Finance established a $500,000 backstop for special education and then a $500,000 emergency fund, not necessarily just for the Board of Education, but for, you know, the whole town. For any kind of emergency, including COVID, but it could also be, you know, a natural disaster, hurricane relief, something like that.
Alright, Ron, continue on.
Really, unless there's any specific question, that's all.
So, so what are we looking at, you think, right now for excess cost grant that we would be expecting a reimbursement? I would be saying it's, is it going to be roughly around the $500,000 mark? Or is it going to be a little more, a little less?
Well, what we have budgeted is about 680, 680. So what we're still not sure about is a lot of what we applied for last year, we ended up not. You know, a lot of our surplus, we never ended up taking the complete.
Right.
True up this year, or we're, we're probably going to miss something. True-up this year, or we're, we're probably missing something. Short of our budget, because the, the true-up for last year happened since this year.
Correct, correct. Right, and then your, you know, your number, you know, depending on, you know, not everything qualifies for it too. So just because you budget it doesn't necessarily mean that it's qualified and you meet that threshold. Is there anything at this point in the budget that you, right now, are concerned with, where you see that we may be trending where we have a deficit or an issue? This, you know, obviously, special ed is going to be one place.
No, not really. I mean, at, at this point, special ed is, is, you know, probably a concern. But I think we're, you know, we're doing a good job of communicating, communicating traffic, so, um...
No, I mean, to dig more within the budget to change.
But that's changing, you know, it's, you know, two weeks per month.
Okay. Nick?
Um, how are we in the upcoming budget process? Did we send...
First meeting later, later this week.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Right now, it's with the departments, the departments are all putting together their budgets and they're starting to meet, we have our first meeting, I forget with whom, um, later this week.
I agree.
Okay. And, um, audit, the auditors are, everything's virtual this year?
A lot of it's virtual, we still haven't gotten word when they're going to come out. I think they're going to come out for one day, we'll be, um, some of them are scheduled by, um, but they're, they're not going to be there for, uh, a couple of conferences.
And that'll be November?
No, I think it's sometime later this, we're working on, sometime this, so...
Okay. Okay.
Any other questions for Ron on finance? All right. Great, thank you. All right, we will move on then to the enrollment figures.
Sure thing, this was just a follow-up to Jerry's question last week, I know, or last meeting, at the, at the, at the previous meeting. Um, and I think the, the next two items, you know, there's definitely some overlap with the enrollment figures and the, uh, instructional transition plans. Um, you know, I, I had, I've been sharing the, uh, elementary enrollment numbers, and I also met with the Board of Finan, or, I'm sorry, at the Board of Finance meeting the other day, I did, um, just keep the Board of Finance in the loop of where we were with just overall enrollment. I kind of shared with them some of the messages that I shared with all of you at, at our last meeting, which was, you know, our enrollment was up in the district, um, 47 students, that included 25 homeschool kids, actually got another homeschool request today. You know, we know that our elementary, our kindergarten numbers seem to be down a little bit, and I think the concern is that some people who didn't want to send their kids to kindergarten, didn't send their kid, their kids to kindergarten. And, you know, as I said last time, you know, if you look at the cohort of kids from every grade, so K to 1, from last year to this year, 1 to 2, 2 to 3, every grade went up with the exception of 8th grade, which only lost five kids, which is amazing, you know, going to go into the high school. Um, you know, as I, as I look at that, and, you know, I start to get agita about this upcoming budget season, I look at our elementary numbers, and, you know, you've seen, you've seen those. Um, you know, our high school numbers are, are not in an awful place. If you, if you look at our high school numbers, um, you know, we have 24 classes that are at 26 or, uh, 26 students or higher, that's quite a few. Um, 10 of those are, you know, what I would call academic, you know, um, math, English, science, social studies, world, world language. Um, we, you know, part of the reason we were able to do that this year too, if you remember coming into this, um, we, uh, we, we removed the labs for our, uh, science classes, so our science teachers were able to pick up an extra course this year, which not only thinned out the science classes, but it also thinned out the other classes, because they could take, you know, it just helped us balance the classes a little bit more. And I think that's a, a bigger discussion that, um, you know, Steve and, um, and his staff and I need to have about, you know, how we're going to move forward, um, you know, with the schedule and with, uh, labs and things of that nature. Um, but one of the things that really jumped out at me, and Mike and I have been having some, you know, quite a bit of conversations, is the numbers at the middle school are getting pretty high, and I'm getting pretty concerned there. If you look at our middle school numbers, we've got 78 classes at 26 or higher. Um, you know, some of those are, um, you know, band and, you know, um, strings, you know, some things, some things that can go a little bit higher, but, um, 42 academic classes. The sixth grade, um, English classes are, are pretty jammed right now. We've got 27s and 28s in sixth grade, grade English. And I, and I, and I know I don't need to, you know, I don't need to tell you guys the benefits of class size. Um, you know, you get, you know, more, you know, the lower we can get class numbers while still being fiscally responsible, um, you know, we want to, lower class sizes obviously affords us the opportunity to give individual attention to, uh, for students, it enables us to tailor instruction to meet the, the needs of each individual, gives our teachers an opportunity to provide more feedback, informative assessment, um, gives our kids more opportunity to participate in the classes, um, you know, it allows the kids to have closer connections with each other, closer connections with the teachers, and in general, I think if you talk to, you know, universally, teachers across, you know, the globe, they'll say, you know, you're going to have less interruptions and less disruptions, you know, if you have a smaller class. Class, classroom management is definitely, um, you know, an issue. So I, I, you know, I just say that as we get ready to head into the, you know, the next budget season, I know our, our numbers are, uh, are not working in our favor. You know, my predecessors from 2012 to, you know, probably 2019 benefited from, you know, this decreasing enrollment, that, you know, we were able to, um, you know, manage through attrition of staff and retirements and, you know, um, you know, we know what's going on with the market right now. I've, we've heard plenty of stories of people whose houses have been on the market for, you know, in some cases, I know one that was on for an hour. So, um, you know, people are, you know, people are, people are coming to town. So it's just, uh, important that we keep that into, uh, you know, keep that in our context. Jerry, thank you for, uh, for bringing that up last time. Uh, it, it kind of moves us into our instructional plan, um, you know, the, uh, you know, we want to try to continue to move a, ahead within-person learning across the district. I know that in-person learning, I think we would all agree that, um, you know, it's better for kids if they're, if they're engaged, but the middle school and the high school present us with, you know, challenges that we're still trying to address. The class numbers are one of them. You know, class sizes of, you know, Mike ran the numbers even with, you know, um, our fully remote kids, we still have some classes at 20, you know, 27, 28. Uh, we struggle with the inability of the cohort at the, at the middle school and high school. So, you know, if we go in full, full with all these kids, we're going to have some teachers that, we're going to have, you know, you know, possibly, you know, between 100 and 125 kids coming in and out of a, a classroom by the end of the day. We did have a situation today where we had a, a positive case, and we were able to, um, you know, do the contact tracing, the health department has been doing the contact tracing, um, and, you know, we're able to limit it to, you know, a number of students, but if you add students, it's, it's going to, it's going to pose problems. Um, the, probably the biggest problem, I think, you know, Steve, um, you're seeing it in talking to your, um, your colleagues around, around the area, is the cafeterias, you know, um, you know, trying to maneuver, you know, roughly 200, uh, students in and out of the cafeteria stuff, and which really, I mean, the design of the building is so poor at Jockey Hollow, that cafeteria is, is basically the size of two classrooms. Um, so, you know, we have some, we have some work to do there. Um, you know, I want to just put up, you know, with that being said, we, I want, we want to get kids back in more frequently. You know, we want to continue to work to that, you know, to that, um, you know, to that end. Uh, and one of the things that we've talked about, and it's, you know, happening in a number of districts around us.
Are you going to the screen?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is looking to, um, continue, so this is, uh, this is this current week that we're in, um, we have our students at the ninth grade taking the, uh, the PSATs. Next week, continue in the, uh, the pattern that we're in, then the week of Election Day is a four-day week, um, I deal with it the way we've handled other four-day weeks. And then following that, again, start to try to get more kids in. Um, instead of having the remote day Wednesdays at the secondary level, moving to having, you know, basically calling AAA, BB, and then the next week, A, A, BBB. So, you know, getting students in five days a week, but not, but not all kids, um, five days a week just yet. Um, you know, this allows us to increase instructional time with, with students, I'm sorry, this allows us, uh, to get more kids in during the, uh, the course of the next couple of weeks. Uh, the other piece coupled with this is getting, is changing our, um, starting times in the mornings. So right now, Masic is starting at 7:45, uh, Jockey Hollow is 8:20, Mike?
8:35.
8:35.
Yep.
So moving those up 15 minutes a day, which really adds significant time when you start to think about it. 15 minutes a day is an hour, 15 minutes a week, it's two and a half hours every two weeks, it's five and a half hours a month, and when you, you know, add that up to the next, you know, nine months, you're talking about, you know, 45 hours of instruction. So this is our, this is our, you know, what we want for our next step, okay? And, you know, the, the, the big thing is, from here, is to continue to work with the, the health department. Um, I'd like to have, um, the health department come through, walk through the middle school and high school with us before we move back in the element, with the elementaries. You know, we kind of got the blessing of the health department, like to do something with the, uh, with the health department as well, with the, uh, with the, um, the middle school and high school and have them come through and just take a look and kind of scope things out. Um, I think we also have some work to do at the middle school, and we're going to have to, you know, use the, the desks, the tables for lunch at the caf, in the cafeterias, we're going to have to get rid of, you know, the individual desks, which means, you know, a lot of this PPE that you see here will probably be, you know, we'll be adding some of that, um, in those areas as well.
Joe, can you do anything with the gym?
You know, we, uh, my concern there is that, as we get into the colder months, I don't know where gym, where gym class would be, you know? Um, I think if it was, you know, right now, it might have been a little bit easier, but I think we're going to have to rely on those, uh, those areas for, for the gym classes. And we could do a little bit here or there, but, you know, as it is right now, I know for lunch, right now, we're eating inside and outside at both Jockey Hollow and here. I don't know if a lot of kids are still using this outside, Steve.
Not as much.
Yeah. I mean, as it gets colder, it's, it's going to be tricky.
Questions?
So a lot, a lot. I think, Joe, this is a great plan to get us back in. I think I completely agree that the more that students are in, the more face-to-face they have with, with teachers is better for them. And I, frankly, I think it's also, I think the teachers would prefer it. I remember talking to Jack when you were going into COVID in February, and I said something to him about, you know, teachers don't become teachers to, to teach virtually. Part, part of it is the social interaction with the students, and I think that's, that's true. But, you know, I was, this, parlaying this into the, the class sizes, you know, I was just looking at some of these class sizes, this is excellent information, by the way, I think it really, and Jerry, I'm glad you asked the question, I think it lays everything out very clearly, but, you know, I'm seeing some of the, some of the, if you sum up some of the sections at Masic, of the amount of students that one teacher has, you know, there's a math, no names, of course, but there's a math teacher in here who has 112 students. There's a language arts teacher in here who has 111 students. There's a social studies teacher in here that has 114 students, and that's at Masic. I didn't have time to go through Jockey Hollow, but I'm sure there's even teachers there who have larger numbers. And I think, you know, as we've pivoted to this hybrid that we're all dealing with in COVID, and, and not just the, the teachers, but the parents, the students, um, you know, a, a big shout-out to our teachers. Um, I, I was at the Board of Finance meeting on Thursday, I spoke in favor of the 10-248A account, which the Board of Finance didn't do. Um, to be very frank, I don't care that the 323 came from last year's budget. I think that, and I spoke at the Board of Finance very, uh, what I thought was strongly, that we should be buying back a furlough day, um, that didn't go anywhere. But I see some of these numbers, and I guess my comment is that I'm prefacing what this upcoming budget season's going to be like, because I think if you look at, I could have never imagined five years ago that we would even be talking about a teacher shortage in this state. I mean, if you look at what some of the institutions of higher education, the, the numbers that they're pumping out of the, in their MAT programs, Sacred Heart, Fairfield View, all the different education preparation programs, it wasn't matching the demand of what was needed of, of the teacher, of the slots that were open. And now we, we're, we're in a shortage. So I think that these class sizes, all, all the way from secondary down to elementary are going to be very instructive in our budget process and looking at the staff that we need in addition to the increased enrollment, um, that needs to be factored in. Um, but aside from that, I, I did want to ask, how did our substitute fair go? How are we managing the staff that is out with some of the class sizes that we have going into, it's a compound question, going into a plan that has us going in five days a week at Jockey Hollow and Masic? Do we have, if people are out, do we have enough staff to cover the five-day week plan?
Jack, do you want to talk about the, uh, the, the substitute fair?
Sure. We felt that the, the fair was a success. It looks like we'll be bringing on, uh, from the fair somewhere in the neighborhood of 8 to 12 new substitutes. We confirmed that we would, um, certainly welcome 12 of the individuals, uh, to join us in very different processes, so that, to say you have X number finalized, I couldn't do that at this moment, but we know that the 12 of them are interested, and we know that they're in, in different, uh, places in completing, uh, their paperwork, et cetera. We've hired at least two of those people into positions, long-term, uh, positions, uh, positions that we've had at, uh, any number of the schools that we know would be at, uh, at least eight to 12 weeks. And so we brought two of those people on. Um, so it was successful in talking to, um, the people that put that fair together with me, we agreed that we should bring this back relatively quickly, possibly soon as December. Um, in, in terms of what it took to put it together, we feel as though we can put another one together and we can continue to encourage people to join us, especially college students that might have a change to their schedule, uh, you know, based on everything we're living, and maybe we bring on some more.
And with the new additions, will we have, do we have staff to cover, are going into a full plan?
Well, we do right now, but I, I'd be lying if I said it doesn't scare me if we get to a situation. I, I know that's what put some schools out at, at times, because they just didn't have the staff and they had to go on, they had to go on, uh, full remote. Um, yeah, it keeps me up at night, for sure.
So how much is, how many people are in our substitute pool?
Are you in the entire pool? I don't have that number.
You're fine, Bill.
Joe, you're saying to be worried if...
If we had a mass, like, if we had a situation, you know, we, we had a situation today where we had to quarantine some people, if we get to a point where we have to quarantine, you know, several staff members, we, we could, you know, we could find ourselves fully out.
Jerry.
Joe, can I return to your chair a minute?
Sure.
I am, because your question is not a judgment, and you know, every teacher works harder. In the elementary schools, we're giving them a half a day every Wednesday to clean, to prep, to whatever. But at the middle school and the high school, we're going full bore up.
Well, they're still going to have half the kids.
When we go back full, they're not, I mean, I got this, I got what you're doing now.
Yep.
What's your plan to go back full?
If we go back full, I think we'd follow the same model as we do at the elementary. If we, if we go full, we have, uh, Steve and, and Mike and I talked about that, if we go full, we'll follow the same model for the, for the Wednesdays to help.
Just the answer.
Yeah.
So, Joe, timeline on this part, this, this step up from where we're at today, what, when does that start? Sorry?
Uh, this, this starts, um, the week of, uh, Election Day is a four-day week only, so it's the week after we go.
The week after Election.
Three days, three days, two days, two days, three days. And we want to see, you know, we want to see how, how that goes.
Right, so that would be three days, three weeks from today.
Yeah.
Okay.
For both schools, Joe?
For both schools, yeah.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
I think Mike and Steve too, they, they've done a lot of work on this and they, they've met with their staff, I know they, I think they've spoken to Marie about some of this stuff, and, um, you know, they've gotten quite a bit of input on that, so.
Good, done. Can I just ask a question of, of the principals?
Absolutely. Is there, is there buy-in from the staff about this?
I think for, for continuing the hybrid, yeah, and bringing, you know, bringing them in the extra day, getting them to the remote, you have to try and see how, how things go, yes. I mean, to your point, in teacher, going to teaching for that, you know, the student feedback, you heard a couple of weeks ago, and you're speaking for a lot of the students where the Wednesdays seems like a... where the Wednesday seems like, uh, not a good day for most students, depending on which cohort. For the, for Cohort B, when they come in on Thursday after Wednesday, it's a lot, where Cohort A has, you know, seems to be a little bit more in favor of it because they have more time. So, it's, it's, it's tough to, you know, go through eight classes in that, in that amount of time. So, I think it's a, I think it's a good logical next step to, to bring them more often and see how, see if we can continue having the success right here in the heart. So, you know, I've talked to Marie and, and teachers and the I Ls, and talked to all the departmental teams, trying to see where teachers are at, and I think this is a, is a good next step, as opposed to.
Yeah, I think they echo some of Joe's concerns that he mentioned about the size, you know, the class sizes, and, you know, there's some concern about what does they look like in the classroom, how do they maintain safe distancing and, um, go through that. So, I think this is a good, you know, step for us to continue to get them in, see what metrics go and stuff.
Joe, you mentioned the PPE, you are gonna buy additional, like, barriers and things like we did at the elementary schools, so that there's, there's additional protection?
Two, two pieces I think we're gonna buy, unlike at the elementary school, we have the, because the kids are at one desk all day, so we, we have, um, the desk shields that are affixed to the desks and, you know, is, they sell other, like, trifold ones that kids fold up and take with them from class to class, because they travel at those schools. So, looking to do that, and then, um, we'll have to do some kind of customized work, like we've done, you know, here and, um, for the, uh, for the tables, for the, uh, lunch cafeteria tables.
Right. And, and I can tell you from having a child at the high school who is a Thursday, Friday cohort, oh my gosh, the complaints I get from her, she seems to think that, like, I can do something, I keep telling her, like, I don't, no, that's not my job, right? As a board member. But, you know, it's like, oh, I have all these classes, and the expectation is the next day it's due, and it's the same work if it was just the four classes a day, and, like, she gets very overwhelmed. So, I think going to the, keep doing the periods one through four, five to eight, and do that continuously, I think will take a lot of anxiety off those Cohort B kids who I think have, and as we heard from the, the kids, uh, two weeks ago, they have a lot of anxiety with getting all that stuff done in, you know, a very short period of time, same amount of work that they were doing before. Anybody have anything else? All right, Joe, you are continuing on.
Paul, is, um, do we have, so, uh, the next piece is, um, you know, Ron, Jack and I met with Alan Dean, uh, Alan's on the phone with us, unfortunately, he couldn't be here before he starts, let me just pass out, he had a couple of handouts for me, and then Horacio Coito, who is the manager, Horacio, you can come on up here if you want, up, up to the hot seat. Horacio is the, uh, manager for, for the district for Sedexo. And Alan was gonna walk us, uh, through some, some figures, you know, I, I believe I mentioned at a previous meeting, some of the struggles we were having with the food service, um, program. Um, you know, a lot of it is based on, you know, the, the number of kids that we have or don't have, um, you know, purchasing lunch. The, the number of kids we, you know, we have and we don't have purchasing lunch, you know, we started out in half-days, especially at the high school, we had, um, half-days where the, uh, lunch was at the end of the day, so a lot of kids didn't grab lunch before they left. So, you know, we're trying to figure out creative ways, I know Horacio's been working in that direction, to find some, try to find some creative ways where we can advertise, um, you know, and market the, the program to get membership up. We did include, as, as you recall, on the, all the schools on the National School Lunch Program, which is all the schools except for Massey, uh, all those, all those students are, um, uh, able to get lunch for free every day, so it doesn't, it doesn't matter, um, you know, they're entitled to a, a free lunch, so, and that has boosted up, you know, some membership at those schools, and, you know, hopefully, we're trending in the right, right direction, but Alan, I'll let you, uh, uh, pick it up from there if you, if you can hear me, okay?
Joe, I can hear you. Uh, can everybody hear me?
Yep.
Very good. Uh, well, first of all, uh, thanks for having me, and, uh, please accept my apologies for not being able to be there in person this evening, and, uh, and thank you, Horacio, for, for taking the hot seat all by himself, uh, never necessarily comfortable thing. But any rate, uh, I, I provided three documents, the first of which that I wanna talk about is the Excel document that talks about, uh, how we're doing for the year. Like, uh, Joe said, I met with Joe and, and Ron and, and Jack last week to talk about how September, uh, fair, once we had our final numbers in. And, uh, what I thought I'd do is I would take you to just below the two, uh, the two grids to talk about how the sales and the P and L actually, uh, played out for September, and then I'll go back and add some context to that. Um, if you see under September twenty twenty sales, the four schools combined, what I call NSLP schools, the National School Lunch Program schools, uh, had total sales of only ninety-one hundred dollars in the month of September. Uh, that compares to seventy-nine thousand dollars last year for the same period, and Massey had sales of eleven thousand versus fifty-eight thousand, uh, again, for the same period last year. And immediately to, uh, the right of that, I am showing you the P and L, uh, the four schools, the NSLP schools had a deficit of thirty-two thousand, seven-eleven for last year and Massey, or for last month, excuse me, and Massey had a deficit of fifty-two hundred dollars for last year, uh, for last, uh, month, but, yeah, excuse me. Uh, the year-to-date deficit, which you don't see on this, is, which is what raised some alarm bells with the group last week, uh, the program from July through September is an eighty-three thousand dollar deficit. Uh, and this is where I wanna start to bring some context into this. In any year, COVID, non-COVID, uh, we will always run deficits in the, in the summer, because we have no revenue, as you know, and we have carrying costs, the biggest of which is health insurance, that, that gets charged out, uh, twelve months a year, not ten months a year. So, we always go into September with a deficit, and of course, this September is, uh, September unlike any other, uh, where we just simply did not have, uh, nearly the participation that we have in, in a normal year. Uh, and I wanna draw it back up to the, the two top grids, uh, the top grid is the NSLP schools, and, uh, I want you to follow along with, because really, I think the trend here is the important thing to talk about. That first week in September, we only served an average of sixty meals for all four schools combined, uh, and then sixty-two, and then seventy-two meals, uh, respectively, for the first three weeks. So, that is, um, uh, it's almost inconceivable. If I, if I didn't experience it and see the numbers for myself, I wouldn't believe that that, you know, that type of participation or lack thereof could be possible. The fourth week, we started with, uh, as Joe alluded to, uh, normally Monroe participates in two federal programs, the breakfast program and lunch program. Uh, there is another one, which is called the SSO, or the, or the Summer Seamless Feeding Program, where some districts actually do reimbursable meals all summer long. Uh, that's not the case in Monroe, but because of COVID, the USDA, uh, implemented a waiver to that program and allowed any district to participate, including Monroe. So, that's the week where at the elementary and at Jackie Hollow, uh, students can start to eat for free. And, uh, so then our, our count started to, to climb to two of two, uh, we had a holiday week that last week, uh, since three-thirty, and then I extended out, uh, the numbers to the first two weeks in October, and so three-thirty went to five-sixty-six, which went to six-thirty-two. So, you can see the trend is, uh, it's certainly heading in the right direction. I mean, ten, ten times the meals served, uh, per day in the second week is September, or the second week of October versus the first week is September. And that, uh, includes Jackie Hollow still being on a hybrid. So, you have half the kids in the school four days a week, so really, if you blend that out over by date, you only have about forty percent of the population in school. Uh, so, uh, that trend is very positive, and the same holds true for Massey. Again, started off very slow, uh, with the half-days, and then, uh, has consistently increased in revenue from two-seventy-four in week one to three thousand seven, seven-seven last week. And again, keep in mind that Massey two is following the hybrid with, uh, really, if you blend the, the colors out over five days, you only have about, uh, forty percent of the kids in school. I did do some math, just to get a sense of, i- if you were to compare apples to apples and put Jockey on a five-days-a-week and put Massey on five-days-a-week, how would that have compared to Royal last year? And, uh, we're getting closer. Last year, we had about sixty thousand dollars in, uh, reimbursed lunch revenue at the four NSLP schools, and, uh, based on the numbers just last week, that's about thirty-eight thousand dollars in revenue, so we're closing that gap. And at Massey, we typically see ten to twelve thousand dollars in revenue a week. If you, uh, had a full complement of students at Massey, uh, with that week-two number, uh, that would equate to about ninety-five hundred dollars in revenue. So, the gap is certainly closing, uh, but September in, in Monroe, like it was really systemically across, uh, the business of school lunch across the country, uh, really at all types of districts, uh, was a very, a visible month, in a large part because I think there was just a lot of uncertainty with parents and safety and, you know, what do we do with the kids, and do we participate in lunch, should we give them, uh, a lot of the bring lunch to school, and that really is what we saw, uh, fundamentally across the country. So, uh, the trend is far better, and, uh, and so, one of the comments that we had last week was, well, that eighty-three thousand dollars year-to-date deficit, if we extrapolate that out, we could be looking at eight-hundred thousand dollar deficit for the year, we don't have any money budget for that. The eighty-three thousand dollar deficit is actually really three months, so if you extrapolate that out, if you average that over the three months and extrapolate that out, yes, that would be about a three-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollar deficit. Uh, and I alluded to these gentlemen as well, you know, using these three months as the, the benchmark for how to predict the, the rest of the year, just really isn't, uh, really doesn't make a great deal of sense, just simply because it's a three-quarters month that we've had, uh, for the first, and really for the first three months of the year, and you can see by the trend in October, uh, you know, the first two weeks in October, we've had thirty-three thousand dollars in sales versus all of September, we only had twenty thousand dollars in sales. So, I expect October revenue to be about four times that month of September. Um, does that mean that there's not gonna be a deficit in the program at the end of the year? There, most likely will be some type of deficit in the program at the end of the year. Here, as are most, most places, if we continue down the same path, where we only have a percentage of kids, uh, particularly at the secondary schools, where, where those are really, they're, you know, if you look at it from just a business model, those are really the revenue-rich schools in terms of the ability to buy snacks and other, and other meal options that they don't have the elementary schools, so, uh, continuing to, to, to work on a forty or fifty percent, uh, population is, is gonna be challenging. Uh, so what do we do to help mitigate that for the remainder of the year? There's really, there's two other support, one is the managing the middle of the page, uh, so I have commitment from our organization to at least reduce our fees by half for this year, and so that'll be minimally a seventy-five thousand dollar saving to the district. I'm just working through the state now to get, uh, some of the, uh, the Ts crossed and the Is dotted in terms of how we're gonna do that from a USDA standpoint. Um, but that's a seventy-five thousand dollar savings we did have and continue to have a forty percent reduction in labor, uh, to try and match as best we can the, the volume that we have in the schools. That's worth about two-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars annually, uh, and of course, food costs, just by the function of not having as many students, you know, that'll be a hundred-and-fifty-ish savings over the course of the year. So, I feel confident we've taken, assuming we continue on as is, and that's, of course, everyone understands, that's a big assumption, uh, you know, we've, we've taken about four-hundred thousand dollars out of the middle of the page. Uh, so, so that groundwork has been laid, and the other lever is, is to drive participation. And that's a bit more of a partner, uh, effort, really starting with Joe and working with the, the building principals to drive, uh, one, particularly at the, the, not at Massey, but the other schools, home the fact that the meals are free, and that we need to communicate that with the kids and also with the families. Uh, I've also included a couple of other handouts, uh, that you should have in front of you. One is the, uh, just gonna bring up my computer here real quick. It says, what's for lunch this week, uh, hey, hey, Monroe, what's for lunch this week? And, uh, we had, I had our marketing folks down last week to try and get some ideas, and really, we felt that the best way to communicate with the kids and, and the parents, uh, is to, is to implement more digital strategy. So, this QR code, um, if you take your iPhone, and you can do it right now, to that code through your camera, it'll take you right to, uh, the menu. So, we, Horacio's been working with the principals to, to put and hang these throughout the school to try and keep school lunch top of mind, and also to help communicate in a way that, uh, the kids communicate, uh, which is with their phones, same with us, us grownups. And then the other, uh, piece, uh, the literature that I have is, uh, the program that we call MyD Text, and this is a, uh, an opt-in program. You have to opt into it, and there'll be directions on how to do that. And, uh, this will be, there'll be really two strings on this, one will be directed just at the high school students, because I can't, uh, we can't send this or have anybody under the age of thirteen participate in this directly. So, anybody at the high school can participate, and Horacio can use this as a tool, uh, to, to push out, uh, any specials, to, to run through surveys, to have students respond real-time in terms of, um, thoughts on the program, ideas that they might have, uh, specials they'd like to see, menu changes they'd like to see, some really help to get them engaged. Horacio's already, already done a good job with, uh, with an Instagram page at the high school, he has a, a group of kids, not this year, but up until this year, uh, that he's worked with, it's, uh, you know, I don't, we call them student board directors, but it was a little more formal than that. So, between Instagram and these group of kids, he's had some engagement, but this will take that to a different level and really, uh, and really provide real-time feedback for Horacio, uh, to see and for the kids to, to be able to provide. And then the other string will be to the parents, uh, at the elementary and at the middle school, again, uh, opting in, and you can opt out, uh, at any time, like any other, uh, uh, text, uh, information that you get from other organizations. But again, allows us to communicate directly, uh, in a method that most people are used to, and that's convenient, and that, uh, we could talk, we can use it as surveys, we can use this to push specials, we can, we can get feedback from parents, uh, to, you know, help them understand what, uh, you know, if you're a distance learner, where you can pick up food, the types of specials that we have, uh, to remind them of that, uh, you know, it's free lunch, and, uh, you know, those types of, those types of notifications. So, those kind of the two levers, and, you know, any, any course support that we can get from, from, uh, the board and the leadership in the district is, is always helpful, uh, because really, we're all in this together, this is, you know, we've all been dealt a card, uh, that none of us really wanted to have dealt, but we've gotta, we've gotta work through it together. Uh, there's been a lot of unknowns since March, there continue to be, uh, unknowns as we go through the rest of the year, um, you know, how we operate today very well, may not be how we operate in a couple of months. And so, um, but, uh, I thought it was important that I update the board, uh, tonight as to how September looked, uh, to update the board on how the trend is looking, and that, uh, you know, I think it's, uh, that it would be best that, uh, that I get some time perhaps in front of this board, it's your first meeting every month, so that we can discuss where we are, uh, in terms of, of the cafeteria program, the finances in particular, uh, because I know this is money that's not budgeted, and, uh, you know, depending on size of deficits and, you know, how the things play out this year, you know, you know, Monroe and probably all of our clients will have some type of financial exposure that they typically are not used to. So, uh, so Joe thought it was important that I get, uh, in front of you quickly, and, uh, I think it's important that I get in front of you consistently going forward, so that, uh, that we don't have surprises, everybody's on the same page, it's transparent, uh, and we're all, uh, working with the same information.
All right, I, I'll start, 'cause I have a, a couple of questions. If you'd like to start, go ahead, David. My first question is about the schools on the National School Lunch Program. Right now, we're providing free meals, and you're being reimbursed from the USDA, it's the Department of Agriculture, for those meals, so that should really be a wash, correct? You're being reimbursed for what you paid, so instead of the parents paying, the, the federal government is paying.
That's right, the federal government, there is, yeah, that's right, the parents are not paying for any meals, the federal government is paying for the meals, and the price point, really, if you wanna call it a price point or a reimbursement point, it's three hundred and fifty-eight cents a meal. There is a tipping point, uh, as I was explaining to the, to gentlemen last week, you know, the, the hardest costs to, I guess, the least variable cost is labor, because you have to have a certain amount, regardless of whether you serve ten kids or whether you serve a hundred kids a day, you have to have somebody there to do that. But that one individual can in fact serve, you know, both levels of participation. But that one individual can in fact serve, you know, both levels of participation. So we have to be able to have the participation to get to the tipping point where these, those incremental meals really only cost the district food because the labor's consistent. So, I mean, that's been, the challenge has been, you know, when you do 60 meals over, you know, for example, 60 meals in four schools in a day, and you have four or five employees serving those, you're simply not going to cover your costs.
Steve, you want to go?
Don't we have a net zero contract?
That was going to be my next question.
Because I was going to be impressed, sorry, Alan, Dave Ferris.
Who asked that contract?
Yeah, I thought we had a net zero contract. So what you're saying is that...
Hold on one second, Alan. Hold on one second. Dave was just finished. Dave Ferris was asking the question.
Alan, my question is, so what you're alluding to is that if Sodex has a deficit at the end of the year, that the board is going to have to pay Sodex for that? Is that what you're getting at? Because you mentioned unbudgeted funds and, so I just want to make sure I understand your bottom line.
Yeah, so this is, so, yeah, I want to be very clear about this. So in a normal year, our Mastic contract has what we call a break-even guarantee or no-cost guarantee program. The SFP schools have a $5,000 surplus, that's in a normal year. But to arrive at that, you have certain financial assumptions. And one of the big ones, of course, is average daily attendance. If we don't have or can't meet some of those assumptions, then we have to, typically, we will sit down with the board and talk about, okay, who, if we're in a pandemic and it has significant impact on the performance of the program, it's not a pandemic that's to the fault of this board, nor is it a pandemic that's to the fault of Sodexo or really any other organization. Because I've spoken with other districts who have, with the companies, and they're all having same discussions, they've already had, you know, they're having more significant discussions than I'm having with my clients. I think it's a little bit premature to have final discussions around financial guarantee language at this point. But nobody is going to, including Sodexo, for the lack of better words, fund the entire pandemic, insulate our clients from all the financial exposure, because it's, we, it's just, that's why I don't think the money's there. I think, you know, in our case, we guarantee these financial guarantees up to both our fees, you know, that may not even be enough, depending on how the year goes. So, yes, I do think there's going to be exposure to this board. I don't know what that exposure is going to be. It could be as little as a few thousand dollars, it could be more than that. And I think, you know, and one of the reasons I wanted to get in front of this board every month and work with Ron, of course, and Joe and Jack, is to make sure that we fully understand how we're tracking and that we almost micromanage it a little more than we typically do so that everybody understands actually where we stand on a month-to-month basis.
I'd like to review the contract or have our attorney review the contract and see what the true exposure is for us. Because I thought we were at a net zero. And we are in a pandemic, I feel for you, but it's like getting in line, you know? It's, you know, we can, we're increasing our school days, we'll help you push the lunch program, I don't have a problem with that. But I think there may be a disagreement about whether we're going to owe you at the end of the year or not, and we'd have to check that contract and perhaps discuss it with an attorney at executive session if it's heading down that road. I don't know what you think, Donna, or anybody else.
Yeah, I had a couple more questions. So what is our management fee cost?
So the two fees for the district is, you know, for both Mastic and the SFP schools is roughly $150,000 a year. Now, the flip side, in a normal year, we pass through our vendor discount allowances, which are rebates I receive from our vendors for buying discounts. And I have to look at, see if I have it in front of me, but typically, that VDA is close to, if not all of, about what we charge for fees. So the net cost really is almost zero.
Right, but what you're, but I think what you're...
But that's what, so our fee, yeah, so our fees are $150,000. I have, like I did at the end of last year, excuse me, March, April, and May, which I reduced our fee structure. I think the right thing to do as a partner is to reduce our fee structure. And so I have internal approval to reduce fees to a place that makes sense. It's going to be at least half, if not more than half, savings, not cost, of our current fee structure. It's a way for us to help out towards what ultimately is a challenging time.
Right, so that would be roughly, at the worst-case scenario, $75,000.
Right, right. As I mentioned in the beginning, that's one of the cost savings for this year.
Right, and then obviously, we would owe you for repairs and maintenance to our equipment that would, you know, go down, and that roughly runs, what, about $10,000 approximately a year?
It's $10,000 to $20,000 a year. So let's talk a little bit about that subject as well, because I think there's been some confusion around how that works. So in our contracts with Monroe and with every other partner that we have, and as typical with food service management companies, our guarantees do not include the repair and maintenance of cafeteria equipment, simply because it's not our equipment. It's capital equipment that is owned by the Board of Education. And typically, repair and maintenance of that equipment, it comes out of some type of facilities line like any other equipment in the district. So I think what we've learned here in Monroe over the last few months is in fact that repair and maintenance bill isn't coming out of the actual cafeteria funds, it's not coming out of a facilities line. And so, yeah, so if I tell you, when I speak to you at the board, when I speak to any board, I talk in terms of our contract. And if our contract says break-even, I'm going to say, okay, we have a break-even, and we had to give back X amount of fees to make sure that you have break-even if there was a deficit in the program. But that isn't going to talk to repair and maintenance. That's a cost outside of our contract with Monroe, it's outside of any of our contracts that we have, because it's not our equipment to repair or maintain.
Right, I totally understand that. I'll go to Alan for the next question.
Donna, this question, I'll be more familiar. When is our contract out?
We're going out to RFP this year. So there'll be a new contract in place on July 1, 2021. So if I'm understanding this correctly, well, I mean, if I look at this, okay, I would say repairs and maintenance, obviously, I understand. If there's a repairs and maintenance, that's on us, $10,000 to $20,000 a year. If the school lunches are not trending the way it is, and, you know, you're talking a management fee of $75,000 roughly that we would, quote-unquote, what you're saying we would owe, but then are you looking on top of that for us to cover things like labor and food costs? I'm kind of confused, especially with reimbursements from USDA.
If I say, if I say at the end of the year, the program runs $100,000 deficit, let's just use that as a round number, that's inclusive of everything. That's inclusive of labor, that's inclusive of food, that's inclusive of all costs that are associated with the program, including our fees. We bill you every month. We have an operating statement, we provide to Ron, we've provided to Gabby and all those before. This is the cost of operations, this is the invoice for said operation. Of course, Sodexo is paying on behalf of the district, the expenses associated with running the program. So we pay the vendor, we pay the labor, you know, et cetera. And then we invoice the district for that.
But I guess I'm getting confused if it's a net zero program, why is the district being billed $100 grand, let's say, I think, for the ends of the year?
So the difference with this year, like, as opposed to a typical year, is we're in a pandemic and it has greatly altered our ability to serve meals, greatly altered your ability to educate students. And so we are operating in an environment where we have less than half the kids in schools or at the secondary schools. And at the secondary schools, for example, the high school, we, you know, we can't sell the things that we normally sell because the students don't have the ability to go to the cafeterias the way they used to. So the levers that were there to drive the revenue, to cover the expenses, are no longer there. And so what Sodexo is doing, and what every food service management company is doing, they're having conversations with their clients. I can tell you, I'm not going to mention the town, but I was in, meeting with those folks not far from Monroe, who have another vendor, who, they're putting their business out to bit off cycle because that vendor changed the terms in the last year's amendment for this year. So I haven't done that yet. Our amendments went forward as is, because I don't think at this point, it's, I think it's far too early to talk about where we're going to be at the end of this year, to be perfectly honest with you. I don't think anybody in that room or anywhere can say how this school year will ultimately play out, because we just simply don't know. Because we could go to distance learning 100% in two months if we have a COVID spike, or we could all come back to school and things could be normal. There's just no way to predict where we're going to be. And so given that, I'm not going to change any contract language to reflect the change in a guarantee, I think it's premature to do that. I'm simply notifying the board that at this point, based on where we were in September and what played out in September, yes, there may be a deficit that goes beyond the fees that we charge. And if that's the case, then that's where we cap our liability in terms of covering deficit. If there's something beyond that fee structure, then that's going to be, you know, this board's exposure as it would any other board. I don't, you know, last year, we settled with Monroe, it was the only district that I settled with. Every other district wrote off the guarantee completely because I simply just, people understand that this is an unusual time, and it's not business as usual, and contracts are not contracts as usual. I'm sure bus companies have done, you know, they've done, I know they've done what they've done in terms of, and the way they handled last year and are handling this year, it's not Monroe, it's not Sodexo, it's everywhere. And so what I want to do is to get out in front of everybody and just say, look, you know, it was off to a slow start, and we're going to bring our power to mitigate the exposure. But there may be exposure. But I can't, I couldn't tell you right now what that's going to be because there's no way to say what's going to happen this year.
Right.
To be perfectly honest with you. We may be fine at the end of the year, and this may be all for nothing, this discussion.
Well, I'm just trying to get at so that we understand, because if there is exposure, we do not have money in our budget for exposure, because, you know, we have other obligations and, you know, and to be told in June, hey, you're going to owe us $100,000, we don't have $100,000 in June. So I'm trying to get to at least something. Let's say school does close and we're on full remote, what happens and what do we owe you, given that scenario?
Well, I mean, given that scenario, we're down to the skeleton crew and, you know, again, anybody who is a distance learner, which would be everybody in that case, can come and get lunch for free at any school, that they just have to pick it up and take it home. And so, again, it's, you know, the more that we can, the more families and students that we can get to participate in the program in any of these scenarios, the better and help to mitigate any shortfalls in the program.
All right, so let's say everybody is remote. Who's paying for those meals? Is the Board of Education covering these meals? Is the USDA covering these meals? You know, what is your expectation of who's covering these meals?
I mean, whatever we sell, so if we sell, you know, if we have $50, if we sell $50 meals out of the 3,000 students or so that come, you know, that's $50 minus $3, that's $150 in revenue.
No, I think...
More likely, just our labor costs will be higher than that.
I'm saying if we're in remote and kids are coming to pick up free meals because our schools are shut down, who's paying for those meals?
The USDA is...
So we have no exposure to that. So what I'm saying is...
The USDA is paying $3.58 for each meal sold.
K through eight, K through eight, right?
K through eight, I'm sorry, K through eight, not for Mastic. K through eight.
Right, so K through eight, if we're full remote, you're being reimbursed, you're not looking at us for any cost because you're being reimbursed for the USDA. Or is there still other costs that you're saying you're looking at for reimbursement?
So the $3.58 times however many students is going to be the revenue of the program. And then to support that revenue, there's going to be labor costs, there's going to be food costs, right, to serve those meals, there's going to be paper costs to put those meals in. So there's going to be costs associated with it. The question is, will we serve enough meals to offset all the costs? And that's going to come down to volume.
So then, so then the bottom line is you would be looking for us to make up that difference? I want to be full...
The bottom line is, if we had, the bottom line is, depending on what that bottom line is, we will have a discussion with the board to understand, okay, here's where we're at, who's responsible for what? And then we make that decision, we have that discussion. I don't know where that discussion will lead. I'm not saying that this is a responsibility that sits solely on the board, because it doesn't, you know, we have skin in this game, we want to make sure that, you know, we're equal partners in this.
Right, but you can understand where the board is coming from, because, you know...
Of course I can.
Right.
Every board is sitting in the same position as you are. You know, we've talked to, during Europe, I've talked to Ridgefield, we've talked to Brookfield, and kids aren't participating, and, you know, it's the same types of discussions. What are we going to do? Where is the income going to come from? How many, how much labor do we have to cut to get to a place where we can run bare bones and have a program? This is not just a Monroe problem, this is systemic across the industry.
All right, so let me ask...
I can provide, I don't know, anyway, so go ahead.
Let me just ask another question. Let's say you're in, I want to talk about, like, let's just go to, hey, we're in school and we have, you know, the 3,000-plus kids that the assumptions say, and you're still not selling meals. But the assumptions are, you know, that you have five days a week, 3,000 kids a day in our schools. What happens at that point, based on the contract? I'm talking typical year.
If this is a normal year, if, so if this is a typical year, and we have a typical schedule and we have typical enrollment, and if there's a deficit in the program, then we have to follow the contract, because it's a typical year. We have, we've met all the thresholds, we have the schools, the number of schools open, we have the ADA that's in the contract. You know, when we have, when you have those components, then we have to honor the contract to its letter. So if there's a $25,000 deficit, let's say, in a normal year, we're going to make Monroe whole on our financial guarantee, which is a $5,000 surplus with all the schools roll up into one, we only got, all schools roll up into one unit, if you will. So in a normal year, that we have always done, in the 12 or 13 years that I've been in Monroe, we have always, with the exception of last year, eight, any, why don't I say eight, we have made sure that Monroe met our contractual obligation, whatever that was for that particular year. And in the last four years, it's a $5,000 surplus. I have to go back and look at the previous five years. We have always made sure, we've always contributed under normal business conditions to make sure that Monroe has made their financial obligation. And we go back and we go get credit memos and all those things that were applied in all those given years. You go back seven or eight years when they held the Younger Free Kids Act and the regulations that came out with that, if you probably remember, with the whole wheat and the low portion sizes, we lost almost half of our kids. We were down at 35%, 40% participation in Monroe. Were the regulatory changes the fault of Monroe? No. Were the regulatory changes the fault of Sodexo? No. It had an impact. Could I have asked for relief in those years? Were we gave back 100% of our fees and we worked on zero margin? Yeah, could have, but I didn't, because I wanted to make sure that we were a good partner. So you have always, up until last year, and the discussion we're having this year, because we were in extraordinary circumstances, that nobody in this room, including myself, is that fault for, we have always made sure and we've always met the contractual guarantee, always.
Does anybody else have questions?
Joe, can you send us a copy of that contract? Because I want to see if there's any provisions in the contract for un-normal years, as he's saying.
Yeah, we have, yeah. Can you send it out?
I just wanted to make one comment about, I think, something that was said about transportation, and that there's an executive order in our state about boards of education's paying for transportation. And that was put into effect when we went fully remote in March. And at the time, I believe we had a meeting, I think, after we went out but before the executive order, where we talked very peripherally about transportation savings. And then the governor came in and said that there was going to be an executive order about paying a certain percentage for transportation. Well, there are... Well, there are a lot of companies that supply municipal functions, boards of education, towns and whatnot. I could think of Office of Plot, WB Mason, who I know the town uses, and I think the Board of Ed uses. Other, there's tons of vendors that aren't covered under any other type of law or any other type of thing where we have to pay for services that we don't use. And I think that David's point is very well taken, that based on this conversation, we need to dive very deeply into our contracts and understand exactly as many pathways as we can come up with, I don't need to shout, I'm trying to project with the phone, as many pathways as we can think of at this point, to see where we could possibly end up and know what the possible exposure is for as many branches off the tree as we can think about now.
Agreed, and that's what I'm trying to get to, because we can't be surprised, you know, in the ends of the year where it's looking like we have to pay $100,000 that we wouldn't have because we certainly don't have it in this budget.
We'll get it up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Alan.
Thank you, thank you.
Last piece I have is just, actually, Ken Rider was supposed to be here to talk about, just to give a quick little update on Capstone. I could ask him, he ended up having a family situation and he couldn't make it tonight. I can give you the brief synopsis, I don't know. Basically, you know, normally every year, Capstone is, you know, our kids go out, they get mentors, they do 20 hours of field work with a mentor, come back, you know, they write a reflection paper, they do a, you know, a presentation in front of an independent panel, you know, with, you know, with all the restrictions right now. We have a lot of students who've done, you know, who've found mentors in the healthcare fields and whatnot. Obviously, with the restrictions we have going on right now, that's really difficult for our kids. So, basically, they're creating a separate option. There are some students who have still been able to, you know, find mentors and to be able to do it in a safe environment and socially distanced and whatnot. But they're, but for this year only, they're adding a separate component. If you can't get a field work hours, they're adding a research project component to it, a research paper component to it. So they'll still do the presentation at the end, but in lieu of the 20 hours, they'll have to do a pretty significant research paper in place of that. I could have Ken, if anyone has questions, let me know after, and I can have Ken come and clarify that. But it was just, you know, one of those things that, you know, in other ways, that COVID's make us adjust.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Joe? All right, we will move on. We have nothing under old business, so we have under new business, curriculum first review, and we have Lisa Peterson, who is going to present some world language resources for French 1 and 2, Spanish 3. And I take it you're using the screen?
I don't think she- Well, it's just a picture of the book, I don't need to go to different slides. So I'm requesting approval of two titles, the different levels of which have already been approved by this board. Three years ago, we started with level 5 in the Spanish book, level 4 two years ago. Last year, we did not seek another purchase, so we're a little bit of a year behind of implementation. The level 2 book for French actually covers two years, so we were able to buy that two years ago. So we've got French 3 and 4 covered, Spanish 4 and 5 covered. We'd be looking for moving to Spanish 3 with the level 3 book. And the level 1 book in French, they're, it's structured differently. It's the same company, same type of content, but the French books, there's only two levels and they're, they contain twice as much information. So the level 1 book covers, would cover French 1 and French 2, as the level 2 book is covering French 3 and French 4. So, yeah, this purchase would actually complete the French series, 1 through 6, and then Spanish 2 and 1, we would deal with in future years. The series is well-received, it speaks to our instructional methodology, to proficiency, feeds, AP preparation, sealed by literacy testing preparation. It's a good series, teachers like it. Budget allowing, we would like to continue implementation of the series. We're looking to buy classroom sets, we haven't bought individual student books in a long time, so we use classroom sets, and that's what we'll be looking for again for next year. The price tag for French is about $7,000, for Spanish is about $21,000. So, and I have copies if you want to take them.
Does anybody have questions?
Was that for this year?
It would be for next year.
Okay, all right, so we can put that into next year's budget?
Right, it would not be this year's budget.
Are publishers moving towards more online issues?
It does, it has the online, this series has an entire online component as well, and the initial purchase would cover online access for students for six years. And then it's, you remove from there.
How long do we typically get from textbooks, years-wise, before replacement? Do they come out with a new volume before the textbooks actually-
They do, and it depends-
Wear out?
It depends on the content of the textbook. It's, when instruction shifts or focus of, you know, summative testing changes, then the book is only as good as it serves what you need it to do. Our, the books we're using right now, I believe we bought in 2007 or 2008. They don't do what we need them to do, there's no online support anymore. This, if they came out with a new edition next year, we wouldn't need it. It's doing, it serves what we need it to do, instructionally.
Anybody else have questions, Melissa? All right, so this will be up for a vote next meeting, which I think is the third, I think, or second, something like that?
Second.
Second, okay, thank you. So I don't know, I've got my calendar. And as Lisa said, this will be a part of next year's budget. Well, yes, because this will be for next year. We will move on to item B, which is approval of the contract between the Monroe Board of Education and the Monroe Association of School Administrators, administrators, excuse me, can't speak right now. And this contract is July 1, 2021, that this goes into effect till June 30, 2024. Do I have a motion to approve this as presented? Thank you, Nick. Do I have a second? Thank you, Jerry. Any discussion on this? Everybody has the information in front of them?
Yes.
All right, hearing no discussion, all in favor of approving this contract? And Shannon is a yes, too. Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. We will move on to item C, which is a vote on the transfers that Ron presented. Do I have a motion to approve those transfers? Thank you, Nick. Do I have a second? Thank you, Jeff. Any discussion on these? Hearing none, all in favor? Thank you. We will move on to item 10, which is discussion of legal matters. Executive session anticipated. Do we have a motion to, the Monroe Board of Education hereby moves to enter into an executive session pursuant to Connecticut General Statute Section 1-206B and 1-206E and 1-210B9 in order to discuss and review documents concerning the following matters: Pending litigation in the matter of JT versus de Blasio. Pending litigation in the matter of the Strafford Board of Education versus the City of Bridgeport Board of Education. And the board further moves to invite the following individuals into executive session: Acting Superintendent of Schools Joe Cobza, Interim Assistant Superintendent of Schools Jack Giaccholini, and Interim Director of Finance and Operations Ron Bonoski, Director of Student Support Services Darlene Fencer, and Assistant Director of Student Support Services Jennifer Porcell for Matter 1, pending litigation in the matter of JT versus de Blasio. And I'm not repeating that, so do I have somebody who's going to make that motion? Thank you, Nick. Second, David. All right, any discussion on these two? Hearing none, all in favor of going into executive session? Great, thank you. We won't be doing any-
Nothing to come back out, so-
Right, there will be no action-taking on these things, they're discussions, so we will not come back, and we will dismiss from there with no action taken.
Yeah, we'll go back to-
Classroom, because so that we can spread out.